I'll call this council meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Amen?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Dockin?
Here.
Fagerly?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please say the pleasure of the meeting?
I pleasantly be considered the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move into the consent items. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items?
Also move, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Anderson?
I would like to pull the donation from the Willmer area disc golfers, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Could I also pull the Willmer Community and Activity Center meeting of Tuesday, December 30th?
The Community Activity Center minutes, number H.
I'll second the motion to file our balance of the...
I got Mr. Dockin ready.
Consent items.
We will file all the consent items with the exception of item E, donation to the Willmer area disc golfers, and H, Community Activity Center minutes from November 5th and December 3rd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Councilmember Anderson, do you want to pull the minutes from the...
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I think we should recognize the folks that made contributions to the, to the city for the disc golfers, and we have it here, but maybe Steve could, could read off those individuals and businesses that contributed money.
Mayor and members of the council, I do not have the list in front of me, as you have that list in front of you, but I've got, better yet, I've got the person that facilitated that in the audience today. I'd rather have Andy Bier come to the table, as he's the one that solicited these funds and has created the project that the funds are going to, so if you would invite Andy Bier to the podium, I think that'd be a better deal.
We certainly do. Andy, would you come to the podium, please? Do you have a list, do you know?
I'd like to refresh my memory.
Behind you.
Right behind you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. One of the things that I've always been interested in is Robins Island and, of course, the promotion and development of the disc golf course, and so speaking with the community and rec, one of the goals or challenges they put in front of us is if we could search the community for dollars, we could continue to promote the course and improve it and upgrade it. So the list of people that donated money were Travis Foster of Travs Dynomart, $100, the Stephen Reynolds Foundation for $900, Stephen Wright and Westside Liquor for $1,000, Jennifer Brist and Mark De Cell, the family from Onavideo that enjoy disc golf, $100, Heritage Bank was $100, and then Janine ENT Center was $100 also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, I just want to say again, thanks to those individuals, and I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the donation from the Willmer area disc golfers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And now we will have the Community Activity Center minutes pulled from November 5th. Councilman Amen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This must be the night of recognizing people, and that was my point along with Mr. Anderson, is to recognize some other volunteers, and those are the seniors. After reading the report of the meeting, they have donated 1,015.5 hours of time, the seniors have, to our community center out there, with a value of $22,483.17. Now, that's what I call community involvement. Hats off to them and also to the senior, the senior citizens group, they donated $2,000 to the workshop when reading the minutes, so I don't know how we can thank them, but I hope the message will get out from staff or to somebody over there that we appreciate their hard work and hopefully will continue to have a great center. I just wanted to make that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you again from all the council people, I would assume, and...
Steve, you need to file the minutes.
Move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Action, our Community Activity Center minutes from November 5th and December 3rd. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And at this point, we will move into the Willmer City Council open forum. Is anyone scheduled to talk?
Mr. Bob Enos has signed up.
Mr. Enos.
Good evening, everybody. Hey, first off, Ron, I just wanted to express my condolences at your loss. I was sorry to hear about that, especially at this time of year.
Thank you.
I was fairly pleased to read in the Friday newspaper that Mr. Rehnquist and the boards of, both boards of the Economic Development Commission are reconsidering their positions on the $735,000 reserve fund. It's a very good first step. At the last meeting, Councilman Anderson, he'd stated that he thought $200,000 or roughly half of the EDC operating budget sounded like a good number for a reserve fund, and I came to understand the logic of his suggestion, but I was curious as to how that number was arrived at, so I used that number as a jumping off point to do some research. So you might want to make a couple of notations on some statutes that were of interest to me, because they'll be the basis of a short discussion. It turned out that there's a statute known as Chapter 469 of the Minnesota statutes that was the most interesting with respect to these reserve funds, and that's the statute that describes the state requirements for running any economic development authority in the state of Minnesota. That was the first regulation that I looked at. Then I researched a section called 471.59. Now, that's the general law on joint powers agreements, like the one that Willmer and Candy Ojai County currently have. It was sort of interesting that this whole business of joint powers agreements for collaborations between units of government, counties, municipalities, or whatever they were, in order to save money and consolidate overhead is obviously something that we didn't come up with here in Willmer. It's been circulating in the State House for a good 10 years now. So that was something that I looked at. And then finally, I reviewed what was called Chapter 21, Article 10, Section 11 of the, and that's, that refers to a special legislative session that was held subsequent to this authorizing enabling legislation for joint powers agreements, and that special session was held specifically, it was, it was called at the last minute specifically to authorize the EDC agreement for Willmer. So here's what my research turned up. First of all, state law has no requirement whatsoever for a minimum reserve fund for the EDC, and moreover, the state law doesn't require any reserve fund at all. Number two, and this, this is the jump off point that I think that is going to hopefully interest both the city and the county, because it was something I didn't see coming at all. The only expense that the law stipulates as a legitimate expense for EDC's reserve fund is the expense of making principal and interest payments on bonded indebtedness. It's the only type of expense that the legislation stipulates as a viable and appropriate expense for the reserve fund. So to put that in English for people that are watching on television that maybe aren't as astute on these things as most of you are, these funds can only be used to pay off debts to bondholders who have helped the EDC to finance projects, for instance, construction projects, the acquisition of property, land improvements and the like. Now, to my knowledge, the EDC has never had bonded indebtedness. It doesn't have any debt now, and it doesn't have any projects on the boards for the future that involve any debt at all, and I don't believe it will ever have bonded indebtedness, ever, and that's the subject of another conversation. I want to be very clear on this now. When the newspaper on Friday reported Mr. Rehnquist's comments that undesignated reserves can be tapped into for unbudgeted expenses that may come up in the course of the year, according to the, according to the statute, that's a use of reserve funds that is not specifically designated as an appropriate use of reserves. And I think this is where the county should take some interest now, because I think what this means is the county has the same problem that we do. Now, out of that 735,000 that is in reserves, my understanding is about $400,000 of that came from the county as a result of dissolving the previous economic development authority that preceded the establishment of the EDC. But here's their problem now. That money was put into an undesignated reserve fund, and since it, since it is in reserves, regardless of what the county's intent was on using that money for a revolving loan fund, because it is in reserves now, according to state law as I read it, it can't be used any, for any other purpose than bonded indebtedness, so the county now is stuck with the bit of a catch 22. Regardless of what the stipulation to their grant was, it can't trump state law, and it seems that state law is very clear in saying that this cannot pay down any other expense but debt, not revolving fund, bond indebtedness. Now, at the last council meeting, both Mr. Rehnquist and Councilman Anderson stated that the reserve fund should be set at 200. I now understand why they arrived at that conclusion, and I can see why that's confusing, because the legislation that set up the EDC and agencies like that created an animal that never existed before. It's actually, it's not a city agency, it's not a county agency, it's actually a political subdivision, a special one of the state government. So I think what probably happened here is that the auditor that the EDC used when they've done these audits of funds for the last eight years, used the same auditing standard that he would have used if he was auditing the city government's books, but the problem is, those standards are designed for auditing local units of government, and that's where the problem came, is the EDC is not a local unit of government. It has its own standard, and I think that got lost because it's not an accounting standard, it's a legal standard. So I think what we're looking at right now is not only the city perhaps having an exposure to some potential financial liability down the road, I think the county has it too.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Could you sum it up, please?
Sure. If I had a recommendation to make at this point, I'm obviously not a lawyer, but I think it's time to have this, I think it's time to get a legal opinion on the matter, because I don't know how much, as a board member, I don't know how much money has been spent out of the reserve fund over the last eight years, but there's a very strong possibility from what I've seen, that any money that has been spent, that hasn't been spent to pay down debt, has not been spent according to law.
We will put that to Mr. Robert Scott. At the end of the meeting, we'll talk about that?
Yeah, and I think the primary, as I say, the primary statute you're looking at is that Chapter 469. There's really three sets of regulations that establish the way EDC runs, but that's the six, that's, that's the 800-pound gorilla in the room that needs to be satisfied at this point. And the good news is, I think there's a solution, and I think that solution will help the county and the city.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for listening. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else scheduled to talk? Then we'll move into the Finance Committee report for December 9th, 2013. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was public comment, and there was no one present to address the council. The next item was the Dover Township Fire Contract, and staff reviewed with us the proposed fire protection contract with Dover Township. The statewide formula used to calculate the amount due from the township is based on information from the previous year, and it includes operating costs of the fire department, depreciation of the fire station and equipment, the number of firefighter, firefighter hours used, and market values for the area covered in Dover Township. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement as presented in the amount of $27,198.20.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute the agreement as presented in the amount of Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that passes.
The next item was the Sperryville Lift Station final budget. Staff presented the final budget for the Sperryville Lift Station project totaling $369,907 for our review and approval. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, to introduce a resolution adopting the final budget for the Sperryville Lift Station project in that amount of $369,907.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution adapting the final budget for the Sperryville Lift Station project in the amount of $369,000.907. $369,907. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was Public Works appropriation request. Staff explained to us that pursuant to an ordinance that we adopted in 2010, through which property owners are to be assessed for abatement of nuisance trees, there have been two such incidences in 2013. The cost to the city for removal of those trees totals $1,500, which is being invoiced to the applicable property owners. It's being recommended that the funds collected from the property owners be appropriated back into the Public Works Maintenance and Other Improvements expenditure account, because that's the account that the contractor was paid from. After discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution appropriating $1,500 back into the Public Works Maintenance of Other Improvements expenditures for the collection of the tree removal charges.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the appropriation of $1,500 back into the Public Works budget. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
The next item was the Lakeland Drive budget adjustment. Staff presented an amendment to the Lakeland Drive Interceptor Project budget prepared by Paul Jurick of Bolick Incorporated. Councilmember Fagerly raised the question of assessing the railroad for its share of the cost, noting the railroad is unique in this regard. Staff will research this possibility. I guess I would ask staff at this point, have we had a chance to look into that one any further?
Nelson?
Still working on it?
No reason.
Okay, all right, we'll get an, that was a good point, we'll get, we'll get an answer on that. So then following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution adopting the Lakeland Drive Interceptor Project budget as presented.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to adapt the Lakeland Drive Project budget as adopted. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
The next item were some reports. We looked at the October 13 Rice Trust and the September 2013 Rice Hospital, that was for information only. There was no old business. Under new business, we do have an extra Monday in December, and it was a consensus of the Finance Committee that we set the next Finance Committee meeting for December 30th, 2013. So unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for December 10th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we have next the Public Works Safety Committee report for December 10th, 2013. Mr. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you. Once again, the meeting was held Tuesday, December 10th, 4:45 at City Hall. Nobody spoke under the public comment heading. Item number two had to do with the improvement report from project number 1310. Mr. Jurick of Bolick Incorporated presented the improvement report for project number 1310, which proposes a two-inch mill and overlay of Lakeland Drive from Civic Center Drive to Willmer Avenue Southeast. The roadway will be striped to allow a center turn lane from Willmer Avenue to just north of Becker Avenue. The wet well lift station at the Midwest Technology Campus will be demolished and replaced with a dry well lift station, increasing the capacity as well. The force main will be abandoned in place, and a new 12-inch force main will be bored. A new sanitary sewer will be replaced in deteriorated areas as needed, the extent of which is yet to be determined upon completion of elevating the pipe. Also, a new eight-foot trail will be constructed from Alina Avenue to Civic Center Drive. A center median refuge island will be installed just south of Trot Avenue, where the trail crosses Lakeland Drive from west to east and continues to the north. A quiet zone will be established at the four-track BNSF crossing just north of Litchfield Avenue. Once again, center medians will be installed along the gate arms where the trail crosses. Estimated total project cost is $5,914,000. Following some discussion of the improvements, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I would like to introduce the resolution to accept the improvement report for project number 1310 as presented and order an improvement hearing for January 6, 2014, at 7:02 PM.
I'll second the recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the improvement report for project 1310 as presented and order an improvement hearing for January 6, 2014, at 7:02 PM. All those, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
Our item number three was Stormwater Management Improvements Update. This was for information only. It's quite lengthy, I'm going to kind of hit some of the high spots here. Jared Vogt, the city's interim engineer from Bolton and Mink, was directed by our council to investigate potential improvements associated with the city's stormwater system. Ultimately, the tailwater effect from Lake Wakanda and only six tenths of a foot fall from the city system is the limiting factor restricting any discharge. The backup results in localized flooding until the water elevation in Lake Wakanda recedes enough to permit the water from the city's storm sewer to drain properly. In Bolton and Mink's analysis of incremental improvements, one area considered was the intersection of 10th Street and Candy Ojai Avenue Southwest. The model, which incorporates elevation information, indicated that by constructing a dry pond in the northwest quadrant of the intersection to a depth of seven to eight feet and connecting a 30-inch storm sewer outlet into the existing system, would result in a reduction of the ponding area by five inches. The estimated costs of this option are approximately $75,000 to $85,000. Another option was the cost associated with the construction of larger dry pond in the area by requiring several properties, homes, in other words, in that neighborhood, and the cost, their estimate was about $3 million, but that was determined this would not eliminate the flooding at the intersection, and the benefit was not much more than a smaller pond. Mr. Vogt also mentioned using the former wastewater treatment plant property as a holding area and noted it would not make a significant impact. Vern Carlson, who was at the meeting, representing the Stormwater Task Force, addressed the committee stating he has recently spoken with Lauren Engelby of Candy Ojai County, and that plans are being developed which would take Peach Creek flow coming from Candy Ojai on the ditch 23A system. He understood the stormwater would instead go through two structures and be retained in an 850-acre area, better known as Grass Lake. This would decrease the inflow of water into ditch 23A by about 30%, which would help immensely for Willmer's runoff. Councilmember Amen addressed the committee with his concerns about the establishment of the lake level of Wakanda, and that we should contact property owners and/or various levels of government involved in the process. He also questioned the possibility of enlarging the portions of ditch 23A which have been taken over by the city to allow for capacity. Again, this was for information only. Item number four was the Western Interceptor, Western Interceptor Change Order, the second one for that project. Once again, staff presented the change order to the Western Interceptor Project. It revises the contract final completion date from December 1 of this year to June 1 of 2014. The project is substantially complete, but weather conditions have justified additional time to complete the punch list items. The revised completion date will allow a winter freeze thaw cycle to ensure that the establishment of vegetation is corrected next year. Also, there's no additional compensation to the contractor. Following some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve this change order number two to the Western Interceptor Project and authorize our city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the change order number two to the Western Interceptor Project and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Item number five was the salt storage facility, a change order and a final payment. Earlier this year, the city contracted with Greystone Construction to construct a salt storage shed facility at our Public Works complex. During construction, they encountered some poor soils, which required removing about six inches of soil underneath the footings. Change order in the amount of $550 resulted in increasing the contract amount to $184,000. Our 2,000 CIP includes $200,000 for the facility. With the addition of the cost for the batuminous pad by Dunneck Incorporated, the soil borings, this brings the total to $198,390. Staff recommended approval of change order number one and approval of the project allowing issuance of final payment. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the first resolution, which is to approve change order number one in the amount of $550 for the replacement of poor soils.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the change order number one in the amount of $550,000, $550 for the replacement of poor soils. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
I will also introduce the second resolution was to accept salt storage facility as constructed and authorize final payment to Greystone Construction in the amount of $174,800.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the salt storage facility as constructed and authorize final payment to Greystone Construction in the amount of $174,800. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution carries.
Item number six was accepting project number 1201B and authorizing final payment. The final payment to Donek Inc. for project number 1201B was presented to the committee for consideration. It included the reconstruction of various streets and was awarded to Donek in June of 2012. All the required paperwork has been received and final quantities agreed upon by city staff and the contractor. This payment consists of the final adjusted quantities. It's constructed in the 5% retainage for a final amount due to the contractor of $44,289.64. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following. And I will introduce the resolution that we accept project 1201B as constructed and authorize final payment to Donek Inc. in the amount of $44,289.64.
I'll second the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
That motion, the motion has been made and seconded to accept the project number 1201B as constructed and authorize final payment to Donek Incorporated in the amount of $44,289.64. Is there any discussion? Rule call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Last item was old business. Our chief of police, Mr. Weifels, reported that the jail census as of that date was at 68. And the report for calls for the last two weeks was 645 to the police department. We also had a small discussion on a house that was being used for police and fire training on the east end of Wilmer. Training all the, they were not going to burn it. There's no further comments or questions. I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for December 10th. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have one issue. I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up now or maybe enter a new business. I think there's some strategies and some actions that we should, we should actually have direct the staff on if we need to do that formally in the form of a motion or not. But the issue is regarding the length of time it's taken for the Grass Lake project and the ongoing storm water, tailwater receiving in the city of Wilmer due to the elevation of Lake Wakanga being changed. And to put this to, to put this to bed, you might say to rest, I would, I would sure appreciate if staff or Robert Scott could look into the history of what's, what's taken place. Because Mr. Carlson, Vern Carlson, was at the meeting stating that in 1905, ditch 23 was created and 52% of the cost was paid for by the city of Wilmer. Which makes me think that during that time something's changed. And who has taken control of the water elevation of Lake Wakanga, I don't know. And who authorized it, whether by the DNR or by the Lake Order Association. But after listening to the bar report and all this, if we could lower the lake by one foot, it would be a lot cheaper than the spending, I don't know, was it $355 million to revise our storm water project in the city? And I think I'd like to just, if we could direct it to staff, Mr. Mayor and council, to narrow down those issues so we can put it to rest and take one step at a time. Narrow down whether there's any possibility, like the Lake Association is willing to cooperate with us or discuss with us lowering that elevation of that lake so that we don't have the occasional flooding in our community or at different, different times. And also find out what the history is. There may be some legal aspect to this that we're overlooking. And I think a thorough investigation by our attorney would probably settle a lot of unresolved questions. And if that's possible, I just wanted to take the time to.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, can we address this at some later time in another meeting?
Certainly, Mayor. The council, I mean, you can make a motion at any time to direct me to look into an issue like this. And I haven't obviously looked at it before, but you can direct me to do that.
Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Forgot to mention that after we received your reports and Mr. Carlson was there speaking to us, we directed staff, not by motion, but to speak with Mr. Lauren Inglesby and the county to see what the Grass Lake project or when it's, it's supposed to happen in 2015. They've got, gotten some money, one or two million dollars in grant money to do this project. So my understanding was that staff was going to speak to Lauren Inglesby along with Jared Vogt, our interim city engineer, and then come back to us. That was my understanding.
Yeah, that was the direction and the staff is doing that. And we can, you know, we can certainly look at some of this other information too at the same time. So we can bring that back to a future committee or to the council.
I'm sure that history is somewhere already because the people looking in the Grass Lake have got the events that started back in 19.
Somebody has the documentation.
Yeah. So if we could just.
We can do that.
Jared can maybe talk to Lauren and find out where it's at and.
Yep. And that was understood from the last. So I mean, I think this is, follows along those, along those same lines so we can, you know, look at the additional information that Mr. Ammon's requested as well.
Is there a motion or directive that we need to have?
I don't think it's necessary to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also one other issue. I think there needs to be some gratitude expressed to the county commissioners on behalf of the citizens of Wilmer, what they're doing with Grass Lake. And some of the people have been on the council there for many years, but this may help. If nothing else, help reduce the, the nutrients and nitrates that are in, going down ditch 23 into the lakes for cleaner water. And it may also help a little bit with our storm water issue. And I think the county's been working very hard at it. I just hope, maybe if you could send them a letter saying we really do appreciate their participation and working with us on helping us solve our issues.
As I found out more information on this, consider that done. I will do that.
Thank you.
You have a motion for the minutes, I think, on the floor.
We have a motion for what?
File the minutes.
File the minutes.
File the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for December 10th. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we have the Community Development Committee report for December 12th. Councilman DeBlick is the vice chair. He's going to take over for Mr. Fagerly today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community development met Thursday, December 12th. First item on the agenda was public comment. There was no, no comments. The second item was Robins Island Amphitheater. Bob Mathiasson and Andy Bird presented a revised site plan and elevations for the proposed Robins Island Amphitheater. No fundraising had been done pending the council's support for the project. An estimated cost of the project is at $350,000. Because the project was located on public property, it has been determined that the city needs to bid the project and manage construction. The committee discussed facility design, location and maintenance and type and frequency of the use of the facility. After discussion, there was a motion and a recommendation to the council to sort the, to support the project and commit to construction when the funds have been raised. And I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to support the project and commit to construction when the funds are raised. Is there any discussion?
One question, Mr. Mayor. The anticipated cost, do they come up with anything? Or do they discuss almost all of it or where they're going to get the funding from?
That the anticipated project cost is $350,000. And funding would be, right now is, is through fundraising. And I don't know if Bob is here, if he wants to make any comments on fundraising efforts or how he's going to do that or.
Please come up and address it and name and address.
Agreed. Bob Mathiasson, 3313 Igoriz Drive East. Mr. Mayor, council members, right now there's three primary funding sources I'll be seeking. One is through naming rights for the, for the various areas of the facility. The stage, the patio area, seating areas, et cetera. Another is from individual donors with different tier levels of donations. Those will be recognized through a, some sort of a recognition marker outside of the amphitheater. And then third would be from grants from local, local organizations.
Thank you.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's been a long time coming. I appreciate your hard work on it. And one, at one time when I talked to you about it, I was quite excited about to see this would be a great community project. When we're talking about $355,000, that's a lot of money. I'm just wondering, is there or has the city in the past ever done a, a project with volunteers helping or different construction companies helping along with that process? And if that's, I think it'd be a great, great community project for volunteerism too. And I just wonder if that could be done. That's, that's my point.
I'm not familiar with any councilman.
If that is a.
I'm not sure if this, if the city of Wilmer has done that. Other cities have done that and used volunteer labor and that. And I think that's something that Mr. Mathiasson has, at least we've had a conversation about and there may be options to do that as well. I think, you know, he's agreed to spearhead this and lead the fundraising and the contributions and we'll work with him on, on how that happens.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question. If I, do we need to put in the motion, a, an amount or not?
No.
I don't, you certainly can. If that makes you feel more comfortable, I think the motion as it is is also acceptable.
Question.
Councilman.
Thank you. Bob, hats off to you and Andy and whoever else has been working on this. This is really terrific. You've got a big project ahead of you to get the, to get the funds. Do you have any kind of a timeline in mind when you might, you know, are you looking at a year from now to, to have the funds so it could be built in 15? Or are you looking to build in 14? Or what are, what are we thinking?
My optimism, maybe, I've been told I need to be slowed down and be more patient. I'd like to hit it hard here, come first of the year and see what the appetite for this project is from the community. And I'd like to have enough funds raised. We're looking at construction in 2014. I don't know what the timing of the year that'll be, but the motion that was made and passed at the Community Development Committee meeting was that no dirt would be moved or, or any construction to begin until the funds are raised. So with that as a guide, I'm, I need to get out there and start working hard.
Good luck.
Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Bob. I'm looking at the diagram we have on here done by Ingen. What, what part of the lake is this? I see there's foot lake behind it, but where, where is that location? We have the technology. You should head on the screen up here.
Sometimes a nice picture helps out too.
Which is, which is north?
North is up.
Okay. Architects.
So the amphitheater, is it this location here? Here's the purity shelter. This would be the main parking.
I see.
And then here's the lake and the beach. So part of the reason for this location is in connection to the lake, the beach, the purity shelter, the restaurants and the parking. It really was the concentration of all the amenities that we needed to support this structure.
And then I, am I assuming that you, you visited other ones and checked them out? I mean, to see as far as, I've seen several down in the cities they have and some of these areas. Osseo has a really nice one.
Right. It's part of our design process. Bob, Steve and I all went together and reviewed several different arcs and reviewed the amenities on each amphitheater as well, listed what we thought were good things and what we thought were inappropriate for our site and came up with a design based on those research.
Okay. So I'm looking at, the seating is with their backs to the lake then evidently.
The seating, correct. They're facing the lake.
Facing the lake.
Excuse me. Yeah, facing the lake. Yeah. Okay.
Part of the fun features is there's a glass backdrop that may have some cool features in the glass itself, but it'll allow you to look through the amphitheater so you can connect with the lake in the background, which is kind of nice to you.
Okay. Well, thank you again, both of you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the table, I understand. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number three, Mr. Mayor, was Highway 12 corridor study was for information only. Patrick Guideman, planner with the Mendat District Eight Office presented information about an upcoming Highway 12 corridor study. He stated that the study is intended to create a vision for the future of the Highway 12 corridor through Wilmer. It will not result in a plan because no funding for projects have been identified. The corridor study will begin at 45th Street Southeast and continue west to County State Eight Highway Five. Partners in the project include Mendat, city of Wilmer and Candyohai County. The study will specifically address land use, access, safety, aesthetics within the corridor with a minor discussion on drainage. This study is slated to begin in January of 2014 and will kick off with a number of issues identification meetings and that will bring a broad range of community members to the table. That item is for information only. Item number four was dangerous and unsafe buildings. Staff presented information about deteriorating and unsafe structures at 1504 13th Avenue Northeast and 944 Olaf Avenue Northwest. Staff has attempted to work with the property owners to have necessary repairs made or to have the structures demolished or removed. There, those efforts have been unsuccessful. Staff has recommended that formal removal proceedings begin. After discussion, there was a motion made and seconded at the committee to recommend to the council to direct the city attorney to initiate formal removal proceedings for the buildings at 1504 13th Avenue Northeast and 944 Olaf Avenue Northwest. And I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to direct the city attorney to initiate formal removal proceedings for the building at 1504 13th Avenue Northeast and 944 Olaf Avenue Northwest. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item five, Mr. Mayor, was new business. Chairman Fagerly inquired about some issues resulting from the recent snowfall, including snow removal from sidewalks. People parking in front yards and staff would put reminders on the website with specific ordinance selections detailing the responsibility of the public regarding snowmobile and, or, uh, snow removal and parking. That was the final item on the agenda. There are no questions, Mr. Mayor. Motion to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for December 12th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank you. What was stated about parking in yards? Is there, is it, do we have an ordinance that addresses that? I visited with another individual this afternoon who was concerned about that. All of a sudden winter comes and we're seeing these cars parked in yards.
Councilmember Christiansen, members of the council, this has been an ongoing issue and we probably write 30 or 40 violations annually to deal with this. Some people would just rather park right next to their front steps. Our ordinance does specifically prohibit parking within the front yard except in the driveway or designated official parking area. They cannot park in the front yard in front of the width of the house itself. And so we do enforce this rigorously and it sometimes takes a while. Most of the problems we have are rental properties. And we do cite the property owners and we send notices to the property owners and to the tenants. But when it comes time to cite, it goes to the property owner as the responsible party.
Is it a misdemeanor then? I mean, or the, there's a fine. I mean, or the, there's a fine if it doesn't get removed within 30 days or 45 days, or...
Under our zoning ordinance, any of those issues are considered to be misdemeanors, so...
So it involves a fine, in other words, if it's not taken care of?
Yeah, if it progresses that far.
Yeah, maybe the Tribune could do us a favor and put that in the paper tomorrow that they can only park in the designated parking areas. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And the consideration of the on-sale Sunday liquor license renewal. Kevin, would you like to explain that to us, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you will allow me, I'll take both of those items, 11 and 12, together. But pursuant to our ordinance, we have a calendar year renewal of the Sunday liquor, which is separate from the fiscal year annual liquor license. You have in front of you a list of those on-sale establishments that have applied for the Sunday liquor license and one club on sale. And then you have another document with potential concern for one of those establishments. It is staff's recommendation that you approve on a roll call vote those on-sale establishments and clubs listed on your one document, and that the establishment, the Candy Entertainment Center, does have a setback momentarily, that the other ordinances that we have involved here require that all the bills and payments to the city of Wilmer are paid in full, and the real estate taxes and utilities at the time of this listing were still out of compliance for the Candy Entertainment Center. And staff was recommending that we approve this license also pending proof of payment of those two items to the city clerk treasurer. Since that time, I have a receipt for the utilities that were in arrears, and so that is current. But the real estate taxes, which a portion is payable to the city, that would prohibit them from having that Sunday liquor adopted. But if we wait until the next council meeting, then one of the Sundays would, January 5th, I believe, would be, have a conflict there. So we are, staff is recommending that we approve all those listed on your first page, and that the Candy Entertainment Center be approved, subject to payment of those taxes and proof of payment submitted to the city clerk treasurer.
Also move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the application on a roll call vote subject to the approval of the city clerk treasurer. Now, I would recommend that we take two resolutions?
Two separate motions would probably be best, in either order.
We will do the first one first, the consideration of the on-sale Sunday liquor store license renewal for those that have been mentioned. Is there any discussion?
I need a clarification. Are we talking about the one that has the taxes that are not yet?
No, that's the second one.
That's the second one?
That's...
It all depends on what Mr. Amon's...
Yeah, I think...
My intention was we could do it all in one motion.
I think because of the back taxes, it's better to do in two motions. So if you would maybe clarify which...
All was around my motion, that was my, and just to approve the on-sale license as presented, with the exception of Candy Entertainment Center at this time.
Okay. A motion has been made. Second. And seconded. Would you like to read that to us, please?
That's a motion to approve all the establishments for their Sunday liquor listed. There are eight of them for the on-sale and one club on sale for calendar year 2014.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Darkin.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Would you like to read the second resolution to us?
Well, if somebody makes it, it's to approve the application of the Candy Entertainment Center, subject to proof of payment of the real estate taxes submitted to the city clerk treasurer.
Mr. Mayor will make that motion.
A motion has been made and seconded to do what Kevin said. All those in favor, oh, discussion. Do we have any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Darkin.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. And it leads us to number 13, consideration of Civic Center Arena Special Event by On-sale Liquor License Holder. Kevin, would you explain that one to us, please?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, we have the annual New Year's Bonspiel by the Wilmer Curling Club. Once again, they've rented out the Civic Center, and they're having the Bonspiel on January 3, 4 and 5. And they do have plans of serving alcohol. And the Civic Center Arena Special Event Permit has been completed, and all is found in favor of Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery LLC, with the onsite employee listed taking care of the alcohol as Ben Hooper. It is staff's recommendation that we approve that Civic Center Arena Special Event Permit.
Move to approve. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to consideration of Civic Center Arena Special Event by an On-sale Liquor License Permit Holder. Is there any discussion? Councilman, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to recognize the hard work at that Civic Center of Kevin Matson and his staff. I mean, they just do everything that they do out there. They do it first class. And this is, this is an important thing that goes on in our community that probably wouldn't happen if we didn't have someone like Kevin Matson out there taking care of it.
Thank you very much. We hope that the newspaper will pick that up. Thank you very much.
I was just gonna, same comment, recognize what the Wilmer Curling Club does and all the work they've put into bringing these events to Wilmer. And they do bring a number of people into town, and they are also very fine events to attend, so...
Any further discussion? And that would be a roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Darkin.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Old business. Carleen or Kevin, would you like to explain that?
I think if Mr. Halliday may be able to give just a real brief, short update on the indoor gun range.
Oh, that's the old business. Didn't know where you're going. The Civic Center Arena, the City Auditorium project is progressing with architectural and mechanical engineer proposals to address all the items there, from the contamination to mechanical venting of the gun range and so forth. All those proposals should be in place and presented as soon as the finance committee meets.
Any further old business? Any new business? Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all received a letter from the Minnesota Department of Revenue in our packet this past weekend stating that we're going to be exempt from sales taxes on a lot of things that we purchase for the city. I'm wondering, have we calculated what we're going to save on that and what we're going to do with that money? Is it just going to be added to our general fund? Are we going to use it for something special? Or, I suspect it's a considerable amount, but has staff done any calculating?
We did do that as part of the 2014 budget preparations, and it was accounted for in our 2014 budget, but I can, but Mr. Okun can give you an estimate of what we estimated and then we would save.
Councilman Christiansen, members of the council, we did have to report that prior or during the budget process for 2014, and we reported in the neighborhood of about $200,000 to the Department of Revenue.
So it's already a part of our budget, then?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we accounted for that when we were preparing the budget.
I'm sure I heard it and saw it, but there was only 120 pages in that thing, so...
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Any further old business? New business? Councilman Amon?
One issue I'd like to, Councilman Fagerley isn't here tonight, the chairman of the Community Development Committee meeting, but with the activity of our new industrial park and all the potential of advancement of new businesses coming into this area and to the county, we currently have a policy, I believe that was started back in 1990, regarding employers who were giving tax increment financing or financial assistance, that they would have to make a minimum guideline of $12 per hour to be eligible for those types of programs or offers. I think that's overdue to be reevaluated as far as, $15,000 a year for a family of four still meets poverty level. And I guess I'd just like to refer that to the committee, and it doesn't have to really be a motion. If you could address that issue in community development, I think we should be prepared for the future of our community. And employers, employees' wages are part of that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea. Can we put that in?
We can do that. I can speak with, I'll speak with Councilmember Fagerley.
Thank you. Is there any more new business? Hearing none, we'll go into the announcement of the council committee dates. Councilman Anderson.
Finance committee will meet Monday, December 30th, at 4:45.
Councilman Christiansen.
No Public Works, Public Safety meeting next year. We'll do it next year.
Councilman Amon?
We're taking the rest of the year off. And labor.
And Councilman DeBlick for...
I understand there is no meeting scheduled for the rest of this year, so...
That's correct.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Seconded. A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.